I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Select Board for Monday, November 18th. We are starting at 6:30 tonight with an executive session and then we'll be returning back out to our regular 7 o'clock meeting. Pursuant to that, I would entertain a motion to return to executive session per MGL Chapter 30a, Section 21a, Clause 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in need requirements with the express purpose of reviewing and approving and considering release of past executive session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Alrighty.
Oh, and then to adjourn to regular session?
Yeah, and we will adjourn back out to regular session. Correct. Roll call vote, Minougy and I?
Riley, aye.
Deegan, aye.
Deegan, aye.
Alright, we are in executive session. So it is 7 o'clock and I'm going to reconvene the Select Board. For Monday, November 18th, we had a 6:30 executive session and are now returning for our typical meeting. As always, we'll start with announcements and an agenda review, followed by a public comment period, moving on to the Town Manager's Report. Just a couple items there tonight. We will consider appointing/reappointing David Minougy and Art Prest and Mary Linsky to the Finance Committee. We will get an update from the Town Manager and have a brief discussion potentially on the Capital Planning Advisory Committee. We will consider adopting a revised public records request policy. And then at 7:15, we are scheduled to open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2020 tax classification process. We then have other business ongoing issues, potential for Select Board liaison reports, and two sets of minutes to review and likely approve. Announcements?
I have one. On Saturday, December 7th, from 9 to 1, with a snow date of Sunday, December 8th, at Williams Barn, the 14th Annual Green Sale will take place, which is sponsored annually by the Groton Women's Club. They'll have wreaths, boxwood trees, centipedes, swags, kissing balls, quilt raffle ornaments, and holiday cookies. Proceeds from the sale go towards scholarships for students at Groton Dunspur Regional High School, the Shoban Valley Technical School, and the Francis W. Parker Charter School. So we urge everybody to come out to Williams Barn on Saturday, December 7th, from 9 to 1. Hopefully it won't snow. Thank you.
You said 14th, huh?
December 7th.
14th.
14th Annual. 14th Annual, yes.
Unbelievable.
Alright.
It's the age of the building, it's unbelievable, I think.
Any other announcements? If you could just grab the microphone.
Announcement or comment?
Can you just grab the microphone for us?
The manager has seen this. For your information, now that the Elm Street, oh, sorry, I don't know why I said Elm Street. Maple Tree.
Thank you.
Now that the Maple Tree's gone, and not knowing that anybody's going to come forth right in the near future to memorialize that corner, that for your information has been memorialized twice. Most recently in 2002, when the Constance Wharton Smith Memorial Plaza was dedicated, funded by a town meeting appropriation and by donations from the Groton Garden Club, Groton Women's Club, Groton Pepper Rotary Club, Groton Town Center Committee, and the New England Business Service, Milliken Savings Bank, Seven Hills and Fleet Bank. Prior to that, in 1956, the daughters of John Lawrence and Martha Peabody Lawrence gave to the town a terrace flagstone patio with three settees upon it, designed by Constance Wharton Smith. That obviously had it had money to fund maintenance of it, would have probably lasted up to bill 2000, when this group decided to memorialize Constance Wharton Smith with that same area. And I'm not sure how you feel about that. Most of the monuments or dedications in the town are permanent. They're rocks that are engraved with the information, or something that's ongoing and is maintained, if not by the town, the Historical Society, or some other entity. Not knowing what's going to hap-- I just thought you should have this information. It seems to me that once something is memorialized, it should be in perpetuity, but it isn't always going to be that way. That's just for your information.
Thank you.
Where exactly is the memorial now, physically?
This corner over here, where the tree came down.
We took the tree down.
Where the stone bench is at, over here.
Thank you.
And there is a stone on the ground with the birth and death dates of John Lawrence and Martha Peabody Lawrence. That's when you get down the ramp, when you go out the front door and turn to the right, get down the ramp, it's right there though.
Thanks, George.
Do we have plans to put a new tree on it?
You know, I don't know what the tree warden is planning. We still have to get the stump out of there. The tree had to come down, it was a safety hazard, so let me find out, Josh, and report back to the board.
It's probably going to be problematic getting that stump out from that location. However, repositioning a couple of the pieces of bluestone and whatnot, you might be able to plant the new tree 10 feet away, so maybe you, I, and Tom Delaney can talk about that and get another tree installed there.
Sure. It does look bare there now with the other tree there.
It does.
But I think in addition to the tree, we probably need to work to clean up.
Yes. The memorial is an aspect.
Just who is being memorialized at this time.
Good job.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments, announcements? Alright, Mark, you want to jump in?
Yes, I would, thank you, Allison. So I'm asking the board tonight, I'll give you a charter update under our ongoing issues list, so I can do it now with the board's preference, but for now, I would ask the board to consider reappointing David Minougy and Art Prest to the Finance Committee for a three-year term, expiring on June 30th, 2022. Do you want to do them separate? Allison?
If we could.
Yep. So I'd ask the board to consider reappointing Art Prest to the Finance Committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd ask the board to reappoint David Minougy into the Finance Committee with a term to expire on June 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain.
So the Finance Committee advertised the vacancy for the position on the Finance Committee with the term to expire June 30th, 2020. They received two applicants, they interviewed them, and the Finance Committee is recommending to the Select Board that they appoint Mary Linsky to the Finance Committee. Now, I want to apologize to the board and to the public. Mrs. Linsky spells her name with an E. We sent an email to Mrs. Linsky without an E in her last name, so unfortunately, she's not here tonight, and it's our fault. I don't think that should stop the board from taking action. Finance Committee vetted the candidates, and they are recommending that Ms. Linsky be appointed to the Finance Committee. So I'm asking the board tonight to appoint Mary Linsky to the Finance Committee with a term to expire June 30th, 2020. But is there anything you want to add to that?
We can go through a quick process here, just so you know how this went. We were very pleased to see that we had two very talented candidates. They both had financial backgrounds, they're very qualified. Mary had a CPA, and she's both been working with both nonprofits, and she's an auditor, and she's a public in accounting as well. The other candidate, Peter Doherty, he's an MBA, and he had been primarily in the corporate world, lots of time spent at Raytheon. Since they both had really good financial backgrounds, a lot of our time was looking at other qualifications or availability, and so we spent a lot of time speaking of deciding, having them explain to us how much availability they had in a short time period, like from December through May, where we spend a lot of time, weekends, you know, going through financial stuff. And they both said that they had plenty of time for that. The other thing we were concerned about was their commitment, because this term ends in June of 2020. So we wanted to make sure that, in fact, they were going to re-up, because as you know, the finance process is not an easy one. Probably takes, you got to go through it once to even kind of understand it, the process and how it flows and the town. So we wanted to make sure that this was not going to be something that they'd only think about through the end of, you know, June of 2020. And they both had said that they were both interested in the long term, they wanted to get interested in the Groton scene. So that was good, so they left, and we had, we did an anonymous vote. And after the anonymous vote, which was 4 to 2 at that time for Mary, we discussed the pros and cons, each one of us, after we had voted, to see why we thought one candidate was better than the other. And after we went through that process, we ended up with a unanimous decision to recommend Mary to the Open Finance Committee position and bring it forward to the Select. That was the process we took.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Alright, then I would entertain a motion to appoint Mary Linsky to the Finance Committee through 6:30, 2020?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Thanks, bud.
No move. Sorry. Go ahead.
I'll second it.
Perfect. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the Capital Planning Committee, Capital Planning Advisory Committee held their first meeting on November 12th. I think it was a productive meeting. Steve Lane was elected chair, and they determined their work plan for the coming season. So what I want to tell you is that there are many things that they want to accomplish. You know, they have to do an inventory, and they have a lot of things to do. But what I asked them to do, and they agreed with my recommendations, I want them to focus on the FY '21 capital plan and not worry about the inventory until after budget season. If they try to start an inventory, they wouldn't be able to participate in establishing the FY '21 budget. So what I asked them to do, and they agreed, is that they will work with me in putting together the '21 plan, which is for the next five years, and then they'll start the inventory next spring, after they complete the budget process. So their next meeting is scheduled for December 2nd, which happens to be the budget kickoff, and they are going to meet with the major departments that have capital plans. And they're going to go through a process of understanding their current capital plan on December 2nd, and then work with me to formulate the FY '21 through FY '26 capital budget. So I think we're off to a great start. It's a good committee, they're really eager to get going, and I think we'll have a good process putting the budget together this year with their assistance and their recommendations. The one thing that we also talked about is the whole issue of conflict on the Capital Planning Committee, and whether or not it made sense to take a vote or amend the charge, is I had recommended to the Select Board to prohibit any paid compensated employee from serving on the committee. If you go to page 5 in your packets, I'll get it up on the screen here, I'm recommending a minor amendment to the charge under B appointment, where it'll say, "All members shall be residents of the Town of Groton and shall not receive compensation in any manner from the Town of Groton." I reviewed this with the Capital Planning Advisory Committee, they unanimously voted to support this and the overall charge, they voted to approve the charge. So I'm bringing it to you tonight, asking you to amend the charge with this new wording. So that's it.
Mark, I have a question.
Please.
So this charge, this whole document, reads to me that they are very specifically not involved in any kind of judgment or prioritization of anything that comes from the district to us.
Yeah, that is 100% correct. They are the, where there was a little bit, and I know on Saturday, one of the members talked about representing the Capital Planning Committee at the Florence Roach issue. If you look at the capital plan, we do have a section under there where the town contributes to the capital plan of the district. So there's a $471,000 line item, and then there's also mention of the Florence Roach Elementary School, which in last year's capital plan was 68 million, it's going to probably be adjusted this year a little bit higher, because the Town of Groton is paying for that. When I met with the committee on Saturday, I said, you know, "You don't have any say in the school's capital budget. However, the town will be paying for this. If you're interested, I encourage you to attend the meeting on Saturday." One of the members took that as they were representing the committee at the meeting, which is fine, but the only discussion that they have is they know there's a placeholder on our capital budget that we need to fund that project. But they do not have any say whatsoever in the district's plan. I made that very clear to them. The only issue is we can appropriate $471,000 this coming year to support the district's plan. I hope that explains it.
You said 471 million?
No, 471,000, and then 68 million. I think, if I said 471 million--
The first time--
Did I say that?
--I had million after my--
It is not 471 million.
My fingers left in print.
Are there any other questions? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the, is it, it's not in the committee charge? What is this whole--
This is the charge, the committee charge, as presented, as amended.
I move that we approve the revised committee charge as presented this evening.
Second.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that, because paragraph C is called the committee charge, so I want to make sure that we're approving the whole document.
I move I remote or withdraw my motion. I move that we approve the Capital Planning Advisory document, including the changes to B appointment as presented this evening.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Select Board has scheduled a public hearing with the Board of Assessors within a regular Select Board meeting on Monday, November 18th, 2019, at 7:15 PM at the Groton Town Hall, 173 Main Street, second floor meeting. And the purpose of the hearing is to receive comments on the issue of adopting a levy, a tax levy percentage for fiscal year 2020. All interested parties are encouraged to attend by the Groton Select Board. Our principal assessor, although now officially the principal assistant assessor, is here-- huh? Is here this evening. We are going to ask the Select Board to continue this public hearing until December 9th at 7:15. We posted this and scheduled this session. We were hoping that the state and the assessors would have all the documentation approved and ready to go. We have not received final state certification, we're going to need a couple more weeks to do that. So we cleared it with the state, and we asked them if it's okay if we continue the hearing to December 9th. Since we've already advertised it, they were fine with that. So I'm going to ask the board to take that vote tonight. Jonathan is here to answer any questions on the process.
First we'll do a motion to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I move that we open the public hearing on the tax classification.
Yeah. Is there a second? Alright, all in favor of opening this public hearing?
Aye.
Alright. And then it sounds like we would also like a motion to continue it until 7:15 on December 9th.
I would love for you to do that.
Mr. Riley will make the motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we continue the public hearing for fiscal year 2020 tax classification until December 9th.
At 7:15.
At 7:15.
Second.
Alrighty. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Does anyone have any questions for Jonathan, since he's here? Alright. See you in December, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
So during your work session on November 7th, the board reviewed the response to the public records request policy. You asked for feedback from the town clerk. I had previously sent the board a copy of the revised policy with the town clerk's edits. I believe I sent that out to you last week.
Excuse me. Sorry, I apologize. You're good.
Oh, okay. I was very confused.
Me too.
So I've given you, if you go to page, page 8 of your thing, of your packets, you will see the revised policy in final form from the town clerk. I sent you the red line off record, so I think this policy is fine, and I think it's ready to go. And I would ask the board to adopt the response to public records request policy as presented, with the town clerk's edits.
Someone like to make that motion?
Then John has a question.
You, John, have a question, or John, Josh?
No, I don't have a question on this document.
Okay.
Okay. I do have a request.
Yes.
But we can go ahead and vote on it, and then I can make my request if it passes.
Okay. I will make a motion that we approve the Select Board policy on records requests as presented here tonight.
I'll second it.
Okay. How is it different? Mark, can you give us--
Oh, yeah, basically, we just put in wording here that the town clerk is the records person, and that we, well, we don't need to go through the town clerk. We would like, most public records are held by the town clerk, and we just want the town clerk involved in the process. That's all we did. The policy's pretty much the way the board had adopted it a few years ago, with those minor edits.
Okay, so we have a motion and second to approve this document as presented. Is there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Is that unanimous, or, yeah, okay.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. And, John, you have a question?
So, well, it's a request.
Yeah.
Since this is all in the day-to-day management led by the Town Manager, I would like to request that the Town Manager and the records officer put together a written policy, which will be distributed to all those people who could receive a request, that defines how they're to handle that relative to being able to keep track of when it came in, when it got answered, and so forth and so on. I'm sure everybody's well-intended, but people forget, we get turnover, so this would be, you know, a good Town Manager policy document.
Okay, I think that's a good idea. I have no problem with that, thank you. I will do that.
Yep.
Okay, excellent. So going into ongoing issues, I'd like to give a couple of updates. The senior senate project, I had correspondence today, I really want to get this finalized, so we're waiting for the architect to finalize the final change order, so I can get that paid, and then I'll have the final accounting due, so that's still ongoing. I have no updates on the Prescott or the Water Department issue. We're still waiting to hear from DEP on the consent order. With regards to the MS4 permit, we are scheduling our first meeting. We're trying to schedule a meeting with the Earth Removal Stormwater Advisory Committee as well as the, as well as our consultant to start that process. So that is in process, and we're working on that. I will tell you, though, today we had a kickoff meeting with our consultant on the grant that the, I'm drawing a blank on the name of it, that the Planning Board got for emergency response and emergency management.
MVP.
Yes. And there are a lot of crossovers with stormwater on that. And so there is grant money available that, once we get this process going, that may help us offset some of the stormwater costs moving forward. So we're very excited about that, and we're going to be working on that, and I will keep the board informed of that as we move forward. With regards to the polystyrene containers, I have no update on that. The Green Communities application, we are meeting on Wednesday. Yes, Josh?
Did you send another letter to the Board of Health reminding them about the polystyrene?
Becky was working with them as our liaison on that, so we did reach out to them, and Becky had an update at our last meeting. I don't think you were there, Josh. Was it, were you at a meeting?
I wasn't at the work session, if that's what you're referring to.
No, 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 trying to think. I thought Becky gave us an update, somebody help me.
The impression I got was that nothing was really happening.
That's the impression I'm getting as well.
And if they don't want to do it, that's one thing, but if they're going to do it, great. Give us some timeline, tell us what town meeting you're going to aim for and so forth, and tell us how we can help you if you need any assistance from us.
I will reach out to the Board of Health again.
Thank you.
So Green Communities are meeting Wednesday afternoon with the work group. I've asked John to represent Becky at that meeting, since she's unable to attend. Hopefully, we'll finalize the application, send it off to the board for your final approval, and then get it into the state by the deadline. So we, everything is in process, and we're looking really, really good on it. I'll let you know next week if there are any changes. I'm very sad that this next one may be coming off the ongoing issues list. The House, the House approved the charter, the Senate approved the charter. We received an email from the Governor's Office asking us to give it a once-over and let them know if we're fine with the final wording, which Mike Bouchard and I reviewed in great detail, and we sent an email this afternoon to the state telling them that, to the Governor's Office, please sign it. And the email that we got back from the Governor's Office is, he will be signing it shortly. So I assume that by tomorrow, we will have the approved Groton charter, so--
Yeah, so we're not clapping till we have it.
No, since we have it. So I'm very, very excited about that. So I'll let you know, as soon as the Governor signs it, you'll all be the first to hear from me on that.
And then we start the next--
Then we start the next charter review.
In four years, right?
Yes. Florence Roach Elementary School feasibility study. So on Saturday, we held the first public outreach, and I want to compliment the school department for the job they did in advertising to get the word out. They got the word out. It was, there was a beautiful article that Connie put in the Groton Herald. There were advertisements, it was on Facebook, the word got out to the community that this was taking place. And I have to tell you, I was very disappointed with the turnout. I want to thank John and Allison and John for being there on Saturday. I thought the consultant did such a wonderful job outlining the process and how to receive public feedback, and it would have been nice if there were more people there to see it, because it was excellent. It was really an excellent session. There was a lot of good feedback from the people that were there, but the turnout wasn't what I was hoping for. You know, we were hoping for 80 to 100 to 150 people, and I think 30, maybe?
Yeah.
So I'm not trying to scold anybody, I just, I really want to get feedback into this. This is a major expenditure for the town, and it's going to shape the school system for the next several years, the next many, many years with regards to elementary education. So it's important, and I just really want to get feedback. I don't want to have anybody say it's the first I've heard of it when they see a big project going forward. So again, I think the school department did a wonderful job getting the word out. I'm really sad with the, and disappointed with the turnout.
Marlena--
And there's something else I want to talk about, too, that I think is very important.
So I just wanted to share with the board and the community that there'll be other opportunities to participate. We know just from past experiences, regardless of projects, from the senior senate or the fire station, it's hard to get there sometimes, and you can get more feedback electronically as well. So although there was a lot of outreach in regards to when it was, sometimes you just can't make it. So we understand that, and the Building Committee is going to have many other chances to attend, whether it be electronically, which will make probably a big difference. We seem to get the most response in that fashion.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's a great point, so that will continue. But there's something that we talked about at last Tuesday's Building Committee meeting that I really want to get out to the board now and to the public, so that people understand it, and I'm not going to go into a big dissertation, but state reimbursement on the project will be potentially 51%. Potentially, between 48 and 51%, depending on the final project. But what's important to understand is it's not, if the project is $80 million, just a wide number, that doesn't mean we're going to get $40 million back from the state. It is 51% of eligible costs that the school building assistance board approves. They may not approve every cost that needs to go into this building, but it's still needed in the building. So at the end of the day, the eligible cost of the project may be $70 million or-- or $60 million, and then they will reimburse us 51% of that eligible cost. So I think it's important for everybody to understand that it's not one-for-one. It is eligible cost. And I will tell you that between our OPM and our architect and the building committee, you have great people working on this project to make sure that you get the best project and the most cost-effective project. But I want to set expectations on how the reimbursement works. We spent a lot of time at Tuesday night's meeting getting a tutorial from our OPM on exactly how that works. And I wanted to take tonight's opportunity, the opportunity tonight to explain that so that everybody understands that. And we'll have more information will come out as the project moves forward. Allison, is there anything that I'm missing on that?
No, I think that was...
Okay. I'm sorry, John.
Yes, John?
No, I'd like to ask the representatives from the town that are on that committee to help ensure that we keep a couple of lists, those things that are inside
Yes.
the matching and those things that are outside of the matching.
Absolutely. The OPM will do a good job of that. You'll have that.
Because if we get ourselves all wrapped around rope and not knowing which bucket things are in, it probably would just lead to a lot of conversation that doesn't necessarily need to happen, because...
Right. And some of that eligible cost is a set amount, either a dollar amount or a square footage of area around our pupil or things like that. So it's not necessarily that, you know, they certainly won't cover an indoor swimming pool. That was on the list of no-gos. You know, there are other things that they'll cover a part of, but not all of. But yeah, we'll certainly keep a list.
Excellent.
They would, they kind of, they hit, they told us that Saturday. And we talked about certain things that people would wish list.
Yes.
And they wouldn't be paying for some things in the wish list.
But there are some things that you need, there are some things, though, that are important to the educational
Right.
process that the district may decide, hey, we need this, so we're going to pay for it. And then one thing that's also interesting, on FFNE and technology, they have a set reimbursement amount of $2,400 per student for both, technology and furnishings. 2,400, is that the right number, Allison?
Yep, 12 each.
So 1,200 towards each. That's not a lot of money when you look at technology costs and furnishing costs for that matter. So, you know, there are things that we need to work with, but you still need to get that reimbursement from the state, so it's important that we follow the process. Library roof is going along swimmingly well. That project is, no?
Swimmingly.
That's not good. It's good. It's going very well.
How about high and dry?
High and dry.
We want a dry pool.
Yes, we want a dry pool. And so that project is definitely going well and on time. And then the highway garage renovation project is, again, probably a two- or three-week delay on the final building, but things seem to be going very well with that as well. So we will keep you posted on that. John Ammaral had a chance, another member of the building committee, had a chance about last Thursday or last Tuesday to see the project, and he was very pleased with the progress. So those are my updates. I did have one other issue to point out to the board. Next Monday, your meeting is starting at 6 o'clock. It's a work session to continue on the policies. I am going to bring forward to you, because town council has those now, specifically from 6 to 7, I want to focus on the town manager review policy, because we have some issues with that because of the bolted decision that we really need to talk about. Because it's, that bolted decision makes it very hard on how you're going to do the town manager's review.
That's the Whalen.
The Whalen case, yes. So that's an issue. And then also, you saw, you got the final version of the standard of conduct policy, which I think he changed the name of it to anti-harassment policy. But it is, I think it's in great shape, and he didn't make that many edits to it as well. So I think we'll have good focus. I'll work with Allison to finalize exactly what policies you're going to look at Monday. But I think we'll have an hour of real good focus time on those policies to get those done before your meeting starts at 7 o'clock. So that's all I have, Allison.
Very good. Does anyone have a liaison report? Yes.
I have two things.
Okay.
Last Wednesday, the Master Plan Implementation Committee met with the planning board and gave them the report. So from my participation perspective, I'm no longer involved in that particular task. It's been completed.
Yep.
The other announcement I have is last Sunday at the country club, I had the privilege of participating in the elevation of a very fine young man who's a senior at Groton Dumstable and who is a Boy Scout in Troop 1 in West Groton to the rank of Eagle Scout. His name was Ryan Michael Donnaruma, and he's an outstanding citizen in this town.
Thank you. And congratulations to Ryan and his family. We have two sets of minutes then, a regularly scheduled meeting of November 4th and a work session meeting of November 7th, around Olive seats. Someone like to make a motion to approve those as presented?
I move that we approve the regularly scheduled meeting of November 4th, 2019.
Okay. I will second that. Does anyone have any corrections, questions, or comments? All right. All in favor of approving that?
Aye. Aye.
I move that we approve the work session meetings of November 7th, 2019.
All right. I will second that. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or corrections on these? All right. All in favor of approving them?
Aye.
I will stand.
Very good. All right. I do not have it.
Oops, sorry.
I do not have anything else on our formal meeting, so I will adjourn the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.